I'll just wait a minute. Welcome to the October 7, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Stephen Husaba from Northfield Hills Baptist Church to lead us in invocation if he would come to the podium. And please remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Will you bow your heads with me as we come before our Lord and God? Almighty God, the God of all power and strength, we thank you for the stay and this time that you've given to all of us, Lord Father, a day and time to enjoy life, to enjoy you. We ask your blessings upon the city council. We ask your blessings upon the mayor, Lord Father, that they will work in wisdom and strength together for the betterment of the city of Troy and for your glory and honor, Lord. Your hand has been upon us, and we thank you for your hand being upon us to continue, Lord Father, in the grace and mercy that you give to everyone in this meeting tonight. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Protem Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. The Troy Community Coalition Executive Director Nancy Morrison will present information on Troy Community Coalition's upcoming programs introduced by Cindy Stewart, Community Affairs Director.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Nancy Morrison, Executive Director of the Coalition. She, we placed all her information in front of you, so you have that, and she wants to give you a little annual report to the community.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. So, all of you probably know that Troy Community Coalition is a nonprofit organization. We've been in existence for over 22 years now. We are a nationally recognized organization and a leader in the field of substance abuse prevention. I have provided you with the packet, and one of the things that's in your packet is a report to the community. Enlisted inside the report are our goals of our comprehensive community prevention plan. And I'm here tonight to talk about one of our upcoming programs and one of our prevention events as well. And then, all of those are going to connect to our prevention plan. So you may or may not know that marijuana use is on the rise, especially among high school students. So in an effort to reverse this trend, the Troy Community Coalition, along with 14 other coalitions in Oakland County, are launching a campaign called Clear the Smoke: Protecting Our Kids from Marijuana. This is a research-based campaign to educate all sectors of the community about the dangers of marijuana use. This program would fall under Goals Two and Six of our prevention plan. We know that our prevention efforts are most successful when understood and instituted across all communities. To kick off the campaign, we have invited Kevin Sabett to present on the truth and consequences of marijuana in youth. Mr. Sabett is an internationally known speaker and one of the most knowledgeable individuals on drug policy. He will be presenting on the most current information about marijuana legalization and its impact on youth in Oakland County. The program will take place this Thursday, October 10, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Oakland Intermediate School District in Waterford. So registration is required, and you are all invited to attend, and of course, the public is invited as well. And you can register online, and I have included a flyer in your packet, and that includes the link where you can register. And if you don't care to register online, you can also call the Coalition office. The registration fee is only $10, and that also includes a boxed meal. So I hope some of you will be able to attend. We just want to really educate the public on this timely topic. And of course, I have also included some information about marijuana use in our kids and the dangers, so please take the opportunity to read that. And of course, since we are a nonprofit organization, we have to fundraise in order to keep our doors open. So the second thing I want to talk about is our upcoming event, and that falls under Goal Four, because it is an alcohol and drug-free event, and that is our 18th Annual Celebrity Night Dinner. And it will be held on Thursday, October 24, at the San Marino Club. And the evening will consist of a silent auction, dinner, and entertainment. And the entertainment this year is going to be the Midwest Dueling Pianos. So I heard they're a lot of fun. It's going to be a great evening. I mean, we have a lot of wonderful silent auction items, and we have tickets to the Red Wings game, gift cards to Capital Grill, and we even have an autographed baseball signed by Max Scherzer. So tickets are $125. Public is invited to attend, and I hope all of you will be able to attend as well. And with that, does anybody have any questions about anything I covered this evening?
Any questions for Nancy?
Then thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next order of business is an award recognizing Peggy Sears. I will come down to the podium, and if I could get Peggy to come up, I'd like to present her with an award. I've known Peggy for a long time. I won't say how many years. But it's my pleasure to present the Dudley Sherman Award to Peggy Sears in recognition of exemplary contributions to public sector labor relations and the Michigan Public Employees' Labor Relations Association Award for 2013. Congratulations, Peggy. Well deserved.
Just a quick comment. It's been an honor to participate in this great organization, but without the support of Mayor Slater of City Council and City Manager Kishnick, that wouldn't be possible. So thank all of you.
Our second order of business is a proclamation in recognition of Cindy Stewart, Troy's Distinguished Citizen for 2013. I can't think of a more deserving person. Cindy? I'm going to read this, and then we can take a photo. I've said this before, I know when there's an important person that's been around and done a lot, when you can tell by the size of the font on the proclamation. And this one makes it very difficult for me to read, but it's my honor to read this proclamation this evening. Whereas Cindy Stewart has built a solid reputation as being a committed volunteer, serving many organizations with an enthusiasm and dedication that is respected by all who know her. And whereas, one of the most important aspects in Cindy's life is her family, husband Jeff. They celebrated 40 years in March. Congratulations. Sons Jeff and Jason are here.
Jeff's here.
Jeff's here. Daughters-in-law Cheryl and Heather. Cheryl's here. And grandchildren Kelvin, Haley, Nicholas, and Olivia. Cindy and Jeff have been Troy residents for 15 years, since Cindy was hired as the Community Affairs Director. And whereas Cindy's volunteer efforts in our community began with the Boys and Girls Club of Troy in 2000, when she became a volunteer on the Taste of Troy Committee. She was recruited to be a member of the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors in 2005, and has served as Vice President in 2008 and 2009, and President of the Board of Directors in 2010 and 2011. Cindy has been the chairperson for the Taste of Troy event, the club's largest fundraiser since 2002. And whereas Cindy was a courageous persuaders volunteer from 2001 to 2005, working to assist with Judge Martone's program where high school students produced 30-second commercials teaching middle school students about the dangers of alcohol. Since 2009, Cindy has worked as a volunteer probation officer with the 52-4 court. And whereas Detroit Community Coalition and Detroit Youth Assistant are also very important to Cindy, she has worked on the Coalition's two major events, the Prayer Breakfast Committee since 2004, and Celebrity Night Dinner since 2007, and has served as a member of the TYA Board since 2009, helping and marketing and fundraising. Unbelievable.
I don't sleep.
And whereas Cindy joined the Detroit People Concern Board of Directors in 2010, serving as secretary since 2011. She is Chair of the Pasta Dinner Fundraiser, member of the Marketing/PR and Nominating Committees, produces the annual report, assists with the Christmas party at Fire Station Six, and stuffs backpacks for the back-to-school event. And whereas, for the past five years, Cindy has volunteered on the Dr. Charles A. Main Pediatric Cancer Survivor Scholarship Fund Committee at Beaumont Hospital. She became involved because her youngest son, Jason, was a patient of Dr. Main's and is a 19-year cancer survivor. And whereas Cindy joined the Troy Historical Society Board of Directors in 2011, but she has volunteered at the Historic Village Events for the past 13 years. Most recently, she served on the Troy High School Strategic Planning Committee. Detroit Historical. T H S. Now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council extends a special recognition to Cindy Stewart for her selfless and tireless service and dedication to the community. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all Troy's residents congratulate Cindy Stewart for being named Troy's Distinguished Citizen for 2013, and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. Presented this 7th day of October 2013, it's signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, Cindy.
As I said today, and I'd rather be on the other side giving this to other people, but I just can't tell you how much we love the city of Troy. My husband and my kids and my grandkids who go to Troy schools, Kelvin just graduated from Troy High, and he's going into the Air Force as soon as they call him. And our youngest son is a teacher in Detroit, and he gives back each and every day to a lot of kids all over Detroit. So I just can't tell you how much I thank all of you, because you are what make me do this, because we all are in this together to make this city the most wonderful and the best place anywhere. So thank you.
Hey, I'm out of breath after that one. Our next order of business is C4. The Troy Historical Society will present their 2013 Strategic Plan for the Troy Historical Village, presented by Lorraine Campbell and David Zouza. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Lorraine Campbell, the Executive Director of the Troy Historic Village, and my co-presenter tonight is David Zouza, a member of our Board of Trustees, and also the chairperson for the Troy Historical Society Planning Committee. When his society took over operational management of the village in 2011, we knew we faced a daunting transition. But two years into that transition, we recognized that both the society and the village were facing a far greater transformation if we truly are to be a sustainable operation and independent. The strategic planning process that we went through put us on a pathway towards sustainability. This was an eight-month process. It was led by David, and through that process, we completed an internal and external assessment, looking at our own organization and the community that we serve. We identified critical issues that we must face if we truly are to be sustainable. We established goals and strategies to address those critical issues and a rolling three-year implementation plan. This is a three-year strategic plan, and like the city of Troy, we plan on reviewing our plan and extending it every year so that it is a living document, complete with financial projections on a three-year basis. When we looked at the environment we live in, as I say, our sandbox, we recognized that arts and culture institutions throughout our region face daunting financial challenges because the financial resources we all seek are much more restrictive following the recession. We also recognize that the Troy Historic Village is a unique facility. We are not the Henry Ford. We are not the Detroit Historical Museum with large exhibit galleries and large gathering spaces. But we are a very unique facility, because we are not a small house museum. We are a village, and we have tremendous resources that we hold in trust for the public. We also recognize that those artifacts and buildings and archival materials can serve as social objects. They can stimulate important conversations and discussions. The best analogy comes from another museum director who posed the following analogy. I bet everyone in this room has taken a dog for a walk, and as you go on that walk, you find yourself in conversation with a total stranger. Now, the dog is not necessarily the topic of the conversation, but the dog was the catalyst for your interaction. Our question, why can't artifacts be more like dogs? When we looked at our own organization, the Troy Historic Village and the Troy Historical Society, we saw tremendous resources. We have a solid operational agreement with the city. We are five acres, 11 buildings, and over 9,500 items in our collection. We are facing a difficult transformation, because our budget was decreased from $500,000 a year to $300,000 a year as a result of our restructuring. But we also looked at the tenacity of the Troy Historical Society, a small group, never more than 200 or so members, who raised over $1.3 million in cash through the last four decades to build the museum, and that still contributes annually over 3,000 hours of volunteer service. That's a tremendous resource. We also look carefully at our master site plan, and I know that some of you were not on council when that plan was approved in 2009, but it paints a tremendous vision for the village as a completed facility with a visitor center and a historic barn with expanded parking, with better traffic flow, better safety, and truly the kind of resource that this community needs. A summary of that plan is in your full strategic plan that you have received. Following that analysis, we realized that the village and the society needed to capture a new mission. And the new mission for the society, which has been approved by our members and Board of Trustees, is as follows. The Troy Historical Society stimulates discovery and cultivates lifelong appreciation of history by sharing and preserving heritage through creative, meaningful experiences that engage all of our stakeholders. Please observe that the focus is on the human interaction, the social objects engaged, but we are about the people. We also identified the critical issues that we face. The first is financial viability. To date, we don't have enough money. A visitor experience. We do a great job with school kids, but we need to broaden that visitor experience for every person who walks in the village. Public awareness. We are known by school teachers, but there are still many people who drive by and say, "You know, I've been driving by that place for 35 years, and I always wondered what it was about." And we are not as well-recognized within the region, the tri-county area, as we should be. Adequate resources, whether they are human, material, or fiscal, we need more. Organizational culture, which goes to the heart of the transformation. We must change as an organization, and we face greater changes also as a facility.
Mayor Slater, councilmembers, city staff, and visitors, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Zouza, and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees, and I had the privilege of working with a dedicated group of volunteers and staff to prepare this plan. I have a 30-year career as a strategic planning consultant and health system executive, and I think a medical metaphor may be appropriate. In 2010, when the change occurred and the society had to assume the operational and governance responsibilities, I think it's safe to say that the village and, to a certain extent, the society, was in the ICU. Since that time, however, we've made great strides in improving our health. We're not in the ICU right now, but we're not quite healthy enough to be discharged from the hospital. This strategic plan and the implementation will certainly be a way for us to gain health in the future going forward. What I'm going to do very briefly is just highlight the goals that were developed consistent with these critical issues that we identified, and just touch on some of the strategies. I'll talk about the implementation and some of the financial issues, and we'll end talking about our vision for 2020. When it comes to financial viability, it's very simple. We want to be sustainable on a long-term basis, and we want to eventually get to that point where we are independent and no longer need the financial, operational support from the city. It's not clear when that will be the case, where we will not be able to do that or require those resources, but we anticipate as a goal that that's what we are working on continually. And we're going to achieve that viability by basically growing our revenues and diversifying. And a key way to achieving that is to really enhancing our fund development efforts. The second goal is to really create a visitor experience that is memorable, diverse, and dynamic. We realize that it's a magical place when you come for a visit, but in terms of the information that's available, we have more work to do to provide a more educational experience for casual visitors. And so, what we will be focusing on is developing a program and services committee that looks at developing a robust program that appeals to a variety of stakeholders. The third goal is to be well-known in southeast Michigan, not only in Troy, but in southeast Michigan. And towards that end, we want to develop a marketing and public relations plan that appeals to unique stakeholder groups, and also build a variety of partnerships with community groups and educational institutions throughout the area. The fourth goal is to acquire adequate resources so that we can be sustained in the future. As Lorraine mentioned, financial resources are certainly important, and when you consider the capital needs that we're facing to realize the full implementation of the master site plan for a barn and a visitor center, that'll cost us over $5 million. So it's a significant investment, but it'll be one that'll position us for long-term success. But it's also the human resources as well. We want to develop our people, not only the staff, but our board members. And then, the third resource is technologies. We embrace new technologies to enhance the visitor experience. The fifth and final goal is to create an organizational culture where we can basically be prudent financial stewards of the resources that we are empowered to protect and govern and manage. And so, we are looking at transforming how we do business in the future and act more in a business-like fashion. The implementation of this plan will involve quarterly checks that the board will engage in on that rolling basis. It will also involve an understanding that it's going to be not only staff, but board that'll have to be accountable for the implementation, and will utilize resources whenever appropriate. Very simply, this summarizes the categories of revenues, both in our last existing fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, and a projection period out to 2016. We anticipate growing our revenues by over $160,000. That'll come from growing some of our program services, but substantially increasing the donations that we get from individuals and from businesses. On the expense side, most of the expenses are related to the increased staff. There will be fund development staff person, a business manager, and others that we will be hiring, but we'll also be looking to increase our marketing efforts as well. Our vision for the society is basically this, that we see that we want to empower the people on the board, to energize them so that they can be engaged, and so that we can be effective as a society to sustain the village operations in the future. And I'll turn it back to Lorraine to share what our 2020 vision is for the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
The vision for the village can be summed up in a couple of words. Number one, we are a preservation organization. And not only do we preserve, but we have to present those materials, we have to provide access to them. So our hours, the way we are available, whether it is person-to-person or online, the creativity we put in that accessibility is all part of the vision. We are an educational organization, but our educational efforts have to go beyond what we provide to school kids. We have to recognize that education is a lifelong process and can touch many different kinds of people in different ways. We wish to provide those educational programs and enrichment opportunities from preschool-era-aged children through senior citizens, and also to a wider diversity of cultures. We need to connect people across time and across heritage. If we do that well, we are part of the economic development of this community and the community's development as a development as a dynamic place to live and work and play. We wish to be known throughout southeastern Michigan as the best village you could possibly visit. And when we say the village, we don't want to think of what's in Dearborn or a shopping center up the road. We want to think of the cultural resource in Troy. And part of the excitement of that vision is how we use those artifacts. So tonight, we begin that engagement with the artifact. We have passed out to you this evening a reproduction of the first minutes that we have for a township meeting in May of 1827. I think it's, you will find the transcription on the reverse, if it's difficult for you to read the handwriting. You will find that not only did they select their township clerk, but they also assigned the commissioners of highways and fence viewers. Now, this is where I think it's fun, because the role of these individuals was to watch certain lengths of road and the fences along them. If a fence was falling down, a settler's livestock could get into another property owner's field and do damage. And so the overseers of highways watched both the fences and the roads. And if one of them was found to be deficient, the settler who was supposed to take care of that length of road was required to repair it. If they didn't, the township governance would hire someone for them and send them the bill. I would argue, not a lot has changed in Troy. You'll also note that they decided they didn't have the revenues to build a pound, i.e. jail, that year. The original document is outside council chambers. At the break, I hope you would look at that original handwritten minute book. But I hope that this transcription will spark a conversation, a discussion, and bring you back to the Troy Historic Village. Thank you so much. By the way, if any of you have questions or would like to read the strategic plan in total, it is on our website, troyhistoricvillage.org. Council has hard copies. We also have copies available for loan at the village if you prefer to read it that way. You can also give me a call. We would be glad to set up personal meetings with anyone who would like to help us in our efforts to become strategic. Thank you so much.
You've offered an opportunity for everyone on council to meet with you before the meeting to view the strategic plan and ask questions and get some feedback, so I certainly appreciate that. And hopefully that will limit the discussion and the questions this evening if any. Are there any questions this evening? I think it was a great job. I know this council asked you to come back to us with a strategic plan after the last budget session. We certainly appreciate that, and we'll be talking about this in the next budget session as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our certificates of recognition and presentations. So our next order of business is a continuation on C5 of the, oh, I'm sorry. We have a C5, which is a Transit Center status report for October 2013. Will be introduced by Steve Van Dette, the city engineer. Sorry, Steve, I almost passed you over there.
No problem, no problem. Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm happy to be here this evening to bring some very, very good news concerning the Transit Center. Construction is nearly 100% complete. We're on time and we're under budget. We're approximately $100,000 under the 6.6 million, I think it was, with the crash wall added. And federal transit officials were here, not this month, but in August, and they were very happy with what they saw in terms of the building, the construction, the contractor, our files, our methods of conducting the project, and so on and so forth. So we are in good position to close out the project by the end of this month with all the final inspections and approvals. And after many months of talks with Amtrak and MDOT, we have a lease agreement, and that lease agreement covers 100% of operating and maintenance costs. From a business perspective, the lease is done. We expect to finish with attorney reviews in the near future and submit this lease to city council for approval. Glenn Laypen is here to comment on Transit Center business opportunities, and after which we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members.
See Ara is also here from the chamber. Good evening.
Good evening.
City management, in partnership with the Troy Chamber of Commerce, continues to advance the business opportunity aspects of the Troy Transit Center. And both Ara Tabuzian, who is the president and CEO of Troy Chamber, and I will give you a brief update on this. Marketing brochure has been completed. It's kind of the first step, is to make sure we disseminate information to those interested parties that are looking at potential opportunities to sponsor various aspects of the Transit Center. This brochure contains demographic information, ridership data, and other relevant information that potential sponsors would find useful as they make a decision as to whether or not they might participate in the facility. Along with the Transit Center brochure, suggested sponsorship levels have been formulated to help guide interested parties. These suggested sponsorship levels include a platinum level for naming rights, which is at the highest end, along with gold, silver, and bronze levels. Our intent here is to provide flexibility in order to meet the needs of the potential business sponsor and meet the needs of the Transit Center as well. So we are willing to work with businesses in terms of providing whatever they may need in terms of, if it's not one of these levels, it's a custom kind of thing, whatever they want to do, we are willing to listen and to work with them on potential participation. So we took the brochure, along with the sponsorship levels, combined that with site plan rendering, and put together a sponsorship informational packet. And that packet is being provided to interested parties. Information and updated photos are also available on the website. Both the Troy Chamber and city management are actively contacting potential business sponsors directly to assess their interest in the Transit Center. Transit Center tours with these prospective businesses have begun, and these tours are being arranged not only to show the significant facility that exists, and the very impressive facility that exists right now, but also to help businesses visualize the potential marketing and sponsorship opportunities that they potentially might want to participate in. We're receiving very positive feedback from various businesses as we walk them through the facility. The facility is impressive, and many people have said, as they looked at the original rendering of the facility, that they rarely see a project in the end that looks almost exactly like the rendering from the very beginning. So that's, I think, a good statement as to the quality of the construction and the functionality of the center as it opens. So we're receiving very positive feedback from the businesses, and I'd like to invite Ara up here to provide a little more detail on our visits with those businesses.
Great.
Good evening, Ara.
Good evening, mayor. City council, city staff, thank you for allowing me to come here and can add to this presentation. I think it's very important, though, for me to state initially, because you haven't had, we haven't had a Troy Chamber president in a number of months, that we are still committed to this project. We're very much committed to the economic development vitality of this. So this is not something that we're walking away from. Certainly, my board is in favor of Transit Center. I'm in favor of Transit Center. And collectively, Glenn and I have been sort of the salespeople, as it were, of this economic development model. I'd like to also add, city staff has been great to work with, and I feel very much part of this team. I might add, this team really hit the ground running not too long after I started here. It's actually part of the interview process that I had when I joined the chamber, so I knew this was going to be certainly part of it. And so Glenn and I partnered to identify different segments of business in our community that we feel would have more than just a general interest in the Transit Center. And certainly, we looked at a number of our larger businesses, those that were supportive of the Transit Center to begin with, and we started with that. So let me, if I can just give you some details of what we've done so far. We've, to date, approximately nine onsite tours, as Glenn said, we're bringing businesses out there to actually see it. So we've had nine of those so far. We continue to schedule those every day. So this is an ongoing process, and this is, this is something we feel is going to go on for a long time. Feedback we've received has been outstanding. We firmly believe that showing the quality of the construction is a major plus and something to be very proud of. To date, we have verbal commitments of approximately $6,000, which doesn't include really the positive comments that we've got from businesses, positive commitments that have said, "We're going to be part of this, let's get, you know, we'll get back to you, and let's have an ongoing discussion." And the interesting point to make is that these site tours also have sparked other kinds of thoughts for, certainly Glenn and I, to consider. One of those is certainly the hospitality industry. This is something that we feel can have a major component with the Transit Center, and we're having those dialogues as we speak. As a matter of fact, one of our committees, the Hospitality Committee, hosted by Dwayne Swanson from Somerset End, we've already talked to him actually this morning about having their next meeting at the Transit Center. So we're hoping to get a lot of people in there and show a lot of what's going on. So to recap, you know, we continue to pursue avenues and ideas and certainly welcome those from council as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mayor Protem Fleming?
Just to comment, Mr. Van Dette explained to us that we actually have 100% of the operating cost covered through the lease agreements that we have, but in addition, we have the chamber and the city administration working to sell sponsorships. So that's over and above the operating expenses that we basically got covered that the chamber's working on. So those additional funds that we're raising, how would those be utilized?
You are correct. Those are above and beyond operation and maintenance. We are also looking to the future in terms of capital costs that might come up down the road, windows should get broken, you know, various maintenance things that might come up down the road that might need to be replaced. We want to be prepared for that. So those dollars will come in handy down the road.
Absolutely. Over and above.
Steve, what do you have to add? Any other questions? Thank you. Steve, I know you're happier than anybody that this is coming to an end. Thank you so much for everything you've done and staff. Now that concludes the presentations. Our next order of business is the continuation of a public hearing, the adoption of a brownfield redevelopment plan number six for MJR Troy Grand at 100 East Maple Road. Did staff have anything to add to the public hearing?
Well, I think just to, again, ask Mr. Miller to explain to you, but just, I mean, I could do it just as well. It's pretty easy. The resolutions are in the packet. The first resolution is to accept the plan. The second would be to extend a capture for five years, so with that.
I was, I was more interested that the public hearing is still open at this point. If anyone from staff wishes to comment or MJR wishes to comment at this point, I'm just opening that up to you at this point. I think we all comprehend A and B, and when it gets to the table, we'll probably have some discussion on that. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for a resolution. Mayor? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move Resolution A as printed.
Move by Councilman Henderson and seconded by Councilman Campbell that we approve Resolution A as printed. And I will point out that that is a resolution that does not go five years past to capture Any discussion at the table? I think that the table pretty much asked questions from staff in the last couple of weeks. We've read the resolutions. At this point, I don't see any reason to capture funds five years after, so I will be voting in favor of the resolution. Any other comment? Councilman Teetz?
I'll be voting no, not for anything to do with this development, but because I oppose giving people subsidies and benefits that aren't given to all taxpayers.
So vote, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Motion passes. Congratulations to MJR. Most of us were at the groundbreaking this past week. That was a great event. We certainly look forward to partnering with MJR. It's been a great relationship, and we look forward to continuing that partnership. And thank you for choosing Troy.
Good luck. Our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda. I don't see any names this evening.
Mayor, are you, were you intending to not act on B then, on E1B? So we're just, okay.
There are no post.
Just a matter of clarification for the clerk. Do we need to vote B down, or just if we're not acting on it?
If you, if you don't act on it, it just stays the way it is. If you, you could vote it down if you wanted to absolutely make sure that it didn't come up again, but it would just, it won't happen if you don't vote on it, basically.
I think we're fine with the way it is. Thank you. There are no postponed items, so we'll move to regular business. I1 is the mayoral appointment for the Downtown Development Authority. And resolved that the mayor of the city of Troy hereby appoints Albert Papa to be nominated to the Downtown Development Authority for the term that expires 9/30 of 2017. Support? Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming that we appoint Albert Papa to the Downtown Development Authority for the term that expires 9/30, 2017. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Papa. I2 is a mayoral nomination, and I would like to nominate Timothy S. Blair and forward that name for nomination to the Downtown Development Authority for the term to expire 9/30 of 2015, and that is to replace the vacant spot by Mr. Van Dyke. Support? Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Pennington that we appoint Timothy Blair to the Downtown Development Authority for the term that expires 2015. Discussion? I am moving Mr. Blair forward. He is the CFO of Forbes Company for Somerset Mall and other properties along the DDA district. I've always felt that there should be somebody on the DDA board that has a connection to Somerset, and Mr. Blair is the CFO. His application will be on file probably tomorrow. I think he was going to turn that in today or tomorrow. So it will be there tomorrow. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next order of business is council appointments. I will turn the table over to Mayor Protem Fleming.
Thank you, mayor. Have one appointment to the Parks and Recs Board, actual nomination, resolved that Troy City Council hereby forwards the name of Steve Toth to serve on Parks and Recs Board.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, uh, that's it? Okay. Our next order of business is I3, a request for a closed session. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council shall meet in closed set, closed session pursuant to MCO 15.268H, MCO 15.243G.
Support? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming that we will meet in closed session this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anyone at the table wish to pull a consent agenda item? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Oh, you didn't move a resolution?
Please.
Um, resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis and supported by Councilman Teetz that we approve all items.
I appreciate you throwing me a bone, though.
I heard something down there.
It was me. I threw my voice.
Correction. Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda. The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they all passed. Our next item of business, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. And our first speaker is Resident James Savage. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. At the last council meeting, September 23rd, Mr. Brake made accusations that Councilor Campbell responded very angrily to. And nobody, and that was the response. But at this same meeting, Mrs. Gosling, after kissing up to council members, proceeded to utter vulgar insults at unnamed residents who were seated in the back left of the hall, and she motioned to that area. And no council member responded. I have sat in that area at almost every council meeting for the last 15 years. Now, I voted for most of you on the council. I actively supported and complained for Jeanne Stein, Martin Howlack, David Eisenberger, Christina Broomfield, Robin Beltemini, and Janice Daniels. Not for personal reasons or religious or political affiliations, but because I believed them to be the best to represent me on the city council. And it is for that same reasons that I am supporting Janice Daniels now. Mayor Slater, last year, you sanctioned a resident for making comments that you personally did not like. Her comments were not abusive or defensive. As a councilman and as mayor, you are allowed the same freedom of speech and expression as any other citizen, and that also includes Janice Daniels. But the chairman should remain impartial at all times. In my opinion, we have not had a good chairman since Jeanne Stein. She steered this city through some turbulent times. There were many lengthy, intense meetings, and all speakers were allowed five minutes. Now, I urge everyone to check the TV or computer replays of that September 23rd meeting. Mrs. Gosling used the word "facts" many times in her comments, but she did not offer one fact. But she did, uh, speech consisted solely of crude insults.
Mr. Savage? Thank you. Thank you. Well, I have more, so- Thank you.
I will be back.
Our next speaker is Resident Richard Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thanks for letting me speak. If I could beg your indulgence for a couple of minutes, I'll try not to be so long. Um, since 1929, the Republican Party, in particular the White Wing, has been in love with the balanced budget. Balancing budget when coming out of a severe recession like we've had, in my opinion, would be a serious mistake. Not only would it cause havoc in the stock market, but also probably in the economy as a whole. Second, negotiate what? A healthcare bill is, is already law. It's settled law. The Congress, they negotiate that in Congress itself. What do you, uh, the president's power is only to administer and executive. He's there to implement the law. I, I don't understand what these people are getting at. That's ridiculous. It's uncon- finally, another thing, too. They're, they are trying to force a crisis in the Constitution. What they are trying to do, they're trying to implement law which the president has no power to do. You cannot do that. The place to have these negotiations is in the Congress itself. That's where these laws are made. You can't just somehow pick and choose law that you, part of the Constitution that you like and the other parts that you don't like. That does, that's not the way that it works. So in my opinion, you know, I would hope that, uh, the Congress would get back in there and implement the law as it's supposed to be said. If they want to, if they want to change the law, let Boehner stick, uh, put a bill into the Congress and let them debate it instead of this other stuff that they're trying to promote. Thank you very much. So, time.
Thank you. Next speaker is President Nicholas Scherzaro.
See if I can get that right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Once again, for the fifth straight month, I come before you concerning the budget surplus. Once again, I am deafened by council's reaction to this. Six months have gone by since you were first advised of this surplus and still not one suggestion from any of you. What is it for? What shall we do with it? I keep stating, give it back. How? One way is by eliminating the library millage, the temporary library millage. We can reduce this surplus by 3 million a year. By doing this and by reopening the library on Friday, we can make a 10 million total over the next three years. This won't cover all of the surplus, but it'll make a major dent in it. Another method, the city manager feels that sending out checks to all homeowners is not practical. I feel a far more practical way is to deduct the correct amount from the next tax bill to be sent out to every homeowner. Another problem we have is the increase in collections caused by the increase in property values. Probably going to increase it by about $7 million this year alone. I suggest that instead of increasing the taxable values by the maximum 5% allowed, the city assessor cut back to reduce this influx. If it's not done, we'll continually face this problem. A good one to have, but at the same time, it's still a major problem. We shouldn't be running a budget excess that large. As President Reagan stated, if you give politicians money, they'll spend it. Don't spend it. Give it back. Thank you.
Next speaker is Resident Dan Brake.
You can save yourselves all of this if you would just tell us you're ready to do something. Mayor, you sat on your hands last meeting while you let one of your colleagues berate me by name for exercising my legal and God-given right to address my government about my grievance. Then, when I at last tried to intervene on my own behalf because you wouldn't, you cut me off. That's wrong, and your tolerating behavior beneath the standards of this body. What that man said here at the last meeting in a pretended outrage is that I had spoken at three meetings in a row on the same subject, and he was getting tired of it. Well, obviously, I'm getting tired of it, too. When are you going to do something? The city manager's memo of August 26th summarizes the issue terrifically. For four years in a row, you've been plowing excess money into the general fund surplus. In 2010, the year you first came to us with the need for a tax increase election, the surplus was $2.5 million. In 2011, while you were beating us to death over the issue that you were going to close our library because the city was out of money, you plowed 2.2 million. The following year, 2012, the first year under the library tax that you had to have or you would close our library, you plowed a record 6.4 million additional into the general fund surplus. And for this current year, you're projecting 2.4 million. We all know that that number will be higher. It always is. When are you going to do something? In your own city law, a resolution that you, Mayor, voted for, November 9, 2009, you set the target at 15% of the budget. That works out in this year's budget to $8 million. Your city manager reports to you that you've accumulated over $23.5 million. That means you're at three times your own target. If you're going to tell Troy voters in this election month that that target is only the minimum, I wish you'd hurry up and say it so that we have time to take it into account while we're preparing our ballots.
Our next speaker is Troy resident Cynthia Wilshire. Good evening.
Good evening, all. I see it, we are back to sniping season in Troy again. Every election gives a regular cast of characters here, a chance to roar into the council meeting with their negative stories, accusations, and misinformation. They bluster like a big storm, and they never have any proof to offer of their blowings that they're saying is an actual truth in a situation. Then they blow away until the next election. The public's getting wise to which candidates these storms want to sully, but never give a good reason for these people to tell us who to vote for, for their candidate. If the truthful information, then, why haven't they gone to the press? They should have an expose if we're so bad here. Is it because they don't have any proof and they're just out here ranting? Yes, they have a right to free speech, to lie about anything. I'm finding that the public is getting wise to their ways in electing good candidates that work together for the good of our great city. The public is seeing the result of the past elections, bringing good people on board. This city did not get to be on several number one lists and receive several awards nationally with all the lies that are going around. Our leaders have proven themselves as working for the good of the citizens of our great city. Look around. We are still blossoming with new and exciting businesses like the MJR. They are coming to be part of our success and our future. As to the blowing blusters, you will lose it because you can't prove it. I would like to suggest that if the situation is so bad, why do you continue to live in this wonderful city that you can't stand? We would be much better off if you moved on so that we can concentrate on more great things to come to the future of this great city of Troy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Resident Ron Butterball.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
We have an important election coming up. First glance, it looks like it's kind of complex. Nine candidates running for three seats. But in my view, it's really pretty simple. First, Wade Fleming. Your public career speaks for itself. Finding compromise, working together, creating, uh, crafting creative intelligence solutions to problems. We do not always agree, but that's not what it's, what's important. What's important is that you have always performed those things that you believe are in the best interest of the city of Troy. You have earned our vote for reelection to city council. Ed Pennington, the right man at the right time, selected unanimously from a list of 40 candidates to fill the council, uh, to fill the council opening, resulting from a recall of our former mayor. You are a healer. You helped unite council. You have a long and successful history of business, family, and religious endeavors. Ed, you too have earned the right for reelection as city council. Maureen McGinnis, thank you for your service. We're going to miss you. Best wishes to you in your new career as a mother-to-be. Ellen Hodorak is the perfect candidate to fill Councilwoman McGinnis's chair. She has 24 years of history in our city. She's performed volunteer work that all the other candidates combined can't even come close to. She's got an impressive list of endorsement from community leaders and a long history of professional and family successful endeavors. She is an intelligent and insightful, a great communicator, and even a better listener. She is relentlessly positive. Ellen has earned my vote for city council. Sure, there are six other candidates, and I appreciate all of them stepping up, but collectively, none of them show the experience and the knowledge of our city that the three candidates that I've just talked about have. And I want to say one thing. Endorsements do matter. The three candidates that I mentioned by name have a long list of named leaders who have endorsed them for reelection or for election to council. The others, uh, do not have such an impressive list. I do need to call out, if I have a few minutes of time, a couple of things about our past mayor. She, of course, is running for city council. I want to remind everybody that she has been consistently verbally abusive to our city employees. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Resident John Coolidge. Our next speaker is Resident John Coolidge.
I come before this council to compliment Mr. Kishnik for his August 26 memorandum in which he calmly explains Troy's general fund and its balance. Unfortunately, for the past several weeks, Mr. Kishnik's words have been mischaracterized by Troy's Tea Party. As Mr. Kishnik explained, the increase in the fund balance is a relatively new position for Troy and is an indication that Troy sits in a position of financial strength. He explains that the fund balance has grown because city has controlled costs, primarily through employee concessions, layoffs, and early retirements. In real terms, Troy is currently strong because we have lost police officers, staff, and whole departments within our city. On the other hand, the Tea Party simply screams that the Troy's residents are being overcharged. Mr. Kishnik makes it clear that while the fund balance is subject to variations due to unpredictable economic conditions, the trend over the next five years is to use the fund balance to maintain the level of services that Troy residents currently enjoy. Conversely, the Tea Party simply accuses city council of illegal acts and wants the city council arrested. Mr. Kishnik analyzes some potential uses for the fund balance. First, he considers the possibility of simply writing refund checks to Troy residents. The suggestion is impractical as administrative costs, postage, and processing could end up costing the city as much as the refund. Superior suggestions include using the fund balance in the capital projects funds for street maintenance, or we could use the money through the annual budgeting process, potentially restoring Troy's bond rating to AAA. On the other hand, the Tea Party is threatening to contact the Attorney General and drag our city back into court to get a refund. Mr. Kishnik recognizes that the fund balance is the city's ability to continue as we are without drastic changes in services delivered to Troy residents. I hope that my examples have made clear that this city does not need the continuous parade of Tea Party members throwing tantrums at this microphone and spreading half-truths, misrepresentations, and threats. We all know that the real goal of the Tea Party is to support their darling, the woman whose turn-on council was so disastrous that she was recalled by a majority of the Troy voters. So I urge this council to ignore the tantrums of the Tea Party and continue listening to the intelligent, practical counsel of our exceptional city manager. And I urge my fellow residents to go to the polls next month and elect members of city council who will lead with wisdom, not hostility. Thank you.
That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda. There are no council referrals, so our next order of business is council comments. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. This council is nonpartisan, so whether you're talking about Democrats, Republicans, Tea Party, whatever, it doesn't matter to me. But we do have a generous fund reserve balance. We're at an enviable position. Many cities wish they were in this position. Yes, this council has a duty to determine how to use those funds. Under the direction of our city manager, Brian Kishnik, who's put together this memo, this council will do that. Whether this council will refund the millage or what they will do, that's something we'll come together as a team. And I'm sure there'll be some compromising, there's difference of opinion. But to the two speakers who are up here tonight talking about excess fund balance, we do have a very healthy fund balance, no denying it, and will probably grow again this year. I'm not ashamed of that. I'm very pleased with that because that's a result of a lot of concessions and not being able to fill positions that actually we're needing to fill position in the police department, other areas. Now, we just can't find them fast enough, find qualified people, because our standards are very high for working in this city. So that fund balance will be analyzed with the assistance of our city manager and staff and this council, and we will make decisions. We're not going to do it on a knee-jerk reaction. We're going to analyze it, but it definitely really needs to be done. And I think this whole council acknowledges that, and we have a plan to meet and do that. But it's not going to be a knee-jerk reaction. It's going to be -- we're going to do it, but it needs to be done and will be done.
Any other comments? Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, regarding fund balance, I don't know if anybody paid much attention in, I think it was 2011, my first budget session, the fund balance was forecast to be zero after five years. And that was due to poor market conditions with regard to real estate and commercial and industrial, probably exceptionally conservative forecasting with regard to, you know, where we were going to be in five years. Fast forward to a year later, when we unanimously supported Brian Kishnik to become our city manager, we go into the next study session, and we find that there's excess money in the fund balance, which is a great thing. And arguably, we may not have found that with the previous manager. Maybe we would have. Maybe the market is continuing in such a great trend that we would have found this year regardless of who was in that seat. But despite that, we have a manager that's proactively looking at that fund balance. We have set up a time where we're going to study that in depth, and we're going to figure out what to do with the excess. And yes, there is excess, and we're happy that that's there. So, and, you know, I personally take offense to any blanket statements that would indicate that I need handcuffs on me and to be hauled off to jail over this particular item, because I personally am looking heavily into the situation, and I think everybody on this council takes that pretty seriously. So it's not necessarily, you know, what do we do with it? It's there. But just the rhetoric that sometimes comes up at council table is a little over the top. And I know it's for a point sometimes, and, you know, I've been accused of that, you know, maybe making examples of certain things at times and going over the top. But just bear with us for a little bit of time while we grapple with that, figure out what we're going to do with it, how we're going to handle it. It's not one person's decision. Brian Kishnik cannot make that decision as to what to do with that extra $10 million or more as we get into the next budget session. That's a group of seven of us that have to get together, have similar mindset, and figure out what's best for the community. So, again, just bear with us while we work through the process.
Any other comments? Congratulations to Lori Bloom for your appointment as president to your organization for municipal lawyers. That's a great accomplishment. And as usual, you represent the city well. Thank you. Thank you for that. Just a last comment, a little bit on the fund balance issue. This isn't really the forum for that. Councilman Teetz has asked for a study session for us to discuss that. That is the appropriate place to discuss it, not at the podium, not here at this table. Even some comments that were made tonight on this side, I think we should reserve those comments for our study session. But I also take offense to comments that are made to council members up here, and I wish that would end. Any other comments? There are no other -- anybody want to discuss any reports that are out there this evening? Any reports? We will be in recess and reconvene for closed session in 10 minutes.